I'd like to call the meeting for July sixteen, twenty twenty to order. Good evening. Thank you all for joining us before we begin tonight's meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone to our virtual meeting. And I'd like to explain this meeting format. Tonight, we have our commissioners and staff visible on a video feed. Members of the public have invited to comment on Weaver Speaks in advance of tonight's meeting. And are also able to participate live through web link or by calling in on the phone. You can find that information on our meeting agenda at www dot Weaver speaks.org. All members of the public who are participating live have been muted. When it is time for a public comment at the start of our meeting or as part of the public hearing, we will unmute all members of public. And I may ask you to speak in order based on the first letter of your last name. When we unmute the public, please keep background noise to minimum. You may choose to mute yourself through your own device if you do not plan to participate at all this evening. We recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching on channel eight or Weaver speaks.org. If you do plan to participate this evening when you speak, please state your name clearly, spell your last name and give your street address for the record. The time limit for public comment is three minutes per person. Speakers may not donate their time. When there are no more speakers, I will close the time for public comment and public participants will be muted again. We appreciate your patience with this virtual format as with their in-person meetings, our hope is that we create a friendly and respectful atmosphere. For public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. Thank you. So now I'd like to call. The city Weaver's planning commission for July sixteen, twenty twenty, or may I get a roll call members, please?
Jahees and bye.
Here.
Scott home.
Here.
Christine Disney.
Here.
Melissa Antle.
Here.
Will Kearns.
Here.
Daniel Larson.
Here.
And Ari Critterver and Janet Leo are absent tonight.
Thank you. The next item is the pledge of allegiance. Soon we should see an image of our flag on the screen.
My screen sharing is disabled.
Okay, we probably won't see that image then, but we can go ahead with the pledge.
Okay, please join me with for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
The republic. Which stands one nation under God. Is invisible.
Liberty, justice for all.
Before we continue with our agenda, I'd like to explain how we'll be voting on items tonight. Once you have a motion and a second, all commissioners in support of the motion will be asked to raise their hands and to keep them raised and visible. Until the recording secretary acknowledged that they have recorded these votes after voting, the recording secretary will read the results of the vote to confirm it is recorded correctly. We'll use this protocol for any voting scenario tonight. Is there a motion to approve the audio agenda?
So moved.
Second.
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 Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion pass six to zero.
I will now open up the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak in any subject. Not appearing on tonight's agenda. We have two cases. So this is for. Any item that's not relating to those two cases, you will have a maximum three minutes to speak. Speakers may not donate their time. Please give us your names, spell your last name and share your address. We will now unmute all participants. Please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to speak at this time, you may mute yourself through your own device. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight?
Hi, this is Vivian.
Go ahead.
Can I please get your first or your last name and your address, please?
Sure, Vivian Voss, V as in Victor, O S as in Sam, six nine two zero West forty seventh place. And I basically just had the three question comments. Um, will there be any chance that citizens can attend? In chambers, planning commissions, as we've just lately been able to do in. City council meetings, and I will wait for your answer, comments on that when I'm done with my other two comments. On the planning commission agenda, I printed off the webpage. It says number one comments by noon on July fourteen. I thought it was supposed to be the day before, which would make it the fifteenth, just clarifying that. And then just wondering why there were no minutes for July two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that? Wishes to comment? That's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, I will close the public forum and then. Did staff want to go ahead and answer those questions?
Yeah, I can go ahead and answer those. So we do. Publish for both planning commission and city council that anybody that does not have the technological capacity to join a meeting virtually. Can essentially RSVP to staff by noon on the day of the meeting, whether it's a city council meeting or planning commission meeting. So as long as we know that somebody needs to be in council chambers by noon, then we can make arrangements to have the appropriate staff available to. Enforce social distancing and accommodate comments at the microphone. The other question was about the public comment period, which is always open until the the meeting, the weird speaks platform, I believe closes on the day, the day before at noon. I'd have to check that. I don't know off the top of my head. And now I'm forgetting the third question.
It had to do with the missing minutes from the previous.
Oh, occasionally we have a turnaround time that doesn't allow us to include the draft minutes. And in this case, we had staff on vacation. So we will include both sets of minutes in the next meeting for approval.
Thank you. We have two public hearings tonight for the public hearing will be adding the appropriate staff and when applicable, the applicants to our video feed. Their screens will be shared if presentations are being made, they will remain a part of the video feed until the conclusion of the respective agenda items. After the presentations, the commission will ask. And questions of staff and applicant, and then we'll conduct the public comment portion of the hearing. This will be conducted in the same manner as early by unmuting our public participants. We typically administer an oath for any participant, any public hearing, staff, applicants in the public. In this virtual meeting format, we are administering administering that oath in a different way. If you comment during a public hearing tonight by choosing to testify, you are agreeing that the testimony you give will be the truth as you know it. I will now open up. Case number. WZ dash twenty dash zero four, an application filed by Mary Ann Fake for approval of a zone change from agricultural one. To residential two located at one one seven hundred West forty sixth avenue and ask for the staff report.
During the screen share, I kind of was not sure enough. So if you're unable to show, then I can I can show my screen with your presentation.
I think I see the green share screen. So let me go. And it does host disable participants screen sharing.
Yeah, okay, I'll go ahead and share mine. Sorry about that technical difficulty.
Hello, my name is Serene Tzine, and I'm a planner with the city of Weirages Community Development Department. I am presenting case number WZ twenty oh four. Which is zero plus. Of a zone change from agricultural one to residential two at one one seven zero zero West forty sixth avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the. Case file, the zoning ordinance. Case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met and therefore. The planning commission has jurisdiction to hear this case.
So noted.
This slide shows a two thousand and eighteen aerial. Where the property is outlined in red. The site measures fourteen thousand and twenty five square feet, which is about one third of an acre. It currently contains a duplex that according to the Jefferson County Assessor was.
Seems like it's buffering. Let me try a different file type if it's pausing on everyone else's screen. Sorry about this.
Okay, let me let me know too if we need to take a little break if we're having technical difficulties.
I think we can. I'm gonna just download the file onto my desktop and see if that help eliminates the issue real quick.
He already saved in the shared drive. Do you want me to send you the link? If I have to be downloading it.
I've got it. Yeah, that's where I'm downloading it onto my desktop. Just this, I've got one less.
Um. Okay.
Connection it's gotta make. Thanks, folks.
I'm gonna step out and grab a water.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Serene and I'm a.
Okay. Okay. It looks like we have. Fixed the back end for screen sharing and I also have it downloaded. So. Serene, if you wanna try to share yours and then I've got one for backup if we need it.
Okay, I'm gonna try to find the point in the video that I might have dropped off at.
It was at forty seconds, I think.
Okay.
And Serena, if you'll just unmute yourself, then the audio will work.
Sorry about that. We're good. Where the property is outlined in red. The site measures fourteen thousand and twenty five square feet, which is about one third of an acre. It currently contains a duplex that according to the Jefferson County Assessor was built in nineteen sixty eight. It's located a block north of the forty fourth Avenue corridor and a block east of Tabor Street. Immediately to the south of property is land that is entitled for the Clear Creek Terrace Townhome Development Project. To the northeast and immediate west are primarily low density residential uses. While further to the west and south are are heavily commercial uses on Tabor. I seventy is located in the northwest. The site is currently zoned A one. And surrounded by residential R two zoning to the northwest and southwest, which primarily contains duplexes. Properties in the area zoned planned commercial development, mixed use neighborhood and commercial one contained commercial uses. Well, properties zoned R three and planned residential development contain multifamily uses with three or more units. This is a view of the subject property looking south, which shows the existing duplex. This is a view of the property looking south at the eastern side yard where the applicant would like to build an addition. If approved for the zone change, please note the duplex is currently being remodeled under an active building permit. Thus materials are being stored in this area temporarily. The duplex on this lot is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, but is not compatible with the underlying zoning. The property is non-conforming in terms of lot size, coverage setbacks and use. This could be remedied by rezoning to R two to match the surrounding neighborhood. This would also then allow the owner to construct customary accessory structures or additions. This is illustrated in this table, which compares the existing conditions to the A one and R two zone districts. The development standards are the same in A one and R two in terms of building height. And in all other categories, the differ. And you can see the R two district is far more compatible with existing conditions on the site. In terms of permitted uses, R two allows duplexes, whereas the A one zone district does not. Lots on the A one zone district are also required to have a minimum lot area of one acre. While duplex lots under R two are only required to be minimum of twelve thousand five hundred square feet. Because the A one zone district is intended for single family residential estate living. The setback in maximum lot coverage requirements are also more restrictive than that of R two. The site is not a whole acre, but still subject to the lot coverage restrictions. So the owner is unable to invest in the property. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. Due to COVID nineteen regulations, one person attended the meeting and the notes from the meeting are included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. This case was originally scheduled for a planning commission meeting on June eighteen, two thousand and twenty. However, it came to our attention that the online legal notice for the June eighteenth meeting was inadvertently deleted for a period of four days. After review of the code of laws and consultation with the city attorney, it was determined that this deficiency in notice required that the hearing be canceled and rescheduled. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days and letters were sent to property owners within a three hundred foot radius. Comments collected on Wheat Ridge speaks will be reviewed by the planning commissioners and entered into the public record. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that the proposed R two zoning is consistent with the policies and goals in the city's comprehensive plan. Specifically, the ones outlined for areas designated as neighborhoods. The city goals that are met with the rezoning proposal include encouraging reinvestment in a property. Applicant plans to build in addition if the zoning is approved. Maintaining consistent character, the property will remain a duplex consistent in character to other duplexes that surround it. And consistent maintenance, the applicant is also remodeling those existing duplex. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of their request. The proposed zone change will promote the health, safety. And welfare of the community and does not result in an adverse effect to on the surrounding area. Utility infrastructure adequately services the property. The proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives, the city's comprehensive plan. The zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. The criteria used to evaluate a zone change support request and the R two zoning will bring the existing duplex into compliance. With the zone district in which it is located. Planning commission will recommend a decision to city council, who will also review the zone change request. If city council approves their request, then the zone change is approved. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just like to add that one comment was posted to Wheat Ridge speaks and it was in support of this case.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation for the applicant?
Yes, the applicant would like to use the presentation that is on.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Fake and I own a duplex. One seven zero zero and one one seven one zero West forty sixth Avenue in Wheat Ridge. I grew up in. Up western Colorado and went to school at the University of Colorado, where I graduated with a degree in accounting. After working briefly in Boulder, I moved to the San Francisco. Area where I lived for more than forty years, working as a CPA and for various banks and other companies. My current employer opened an office in Denver in twenty.
It's buffering for me, so I'm going to stop sharing and Lauren's gonna share instead.
Lawyer opened an office in Denver in twenty eighteen. And last summer, they asked me to move to take up a senior finance job downtown. I purchased the duplex in Wheat Ridge with the intention of living on one side with my older daughter. And having my younger daughter and her fiance on the other side. There were a number of improvements I wanted to make to the property. So when I moved, I started living with my daughter and her fiance while the work on my side of the duplex was being completed. Most of the work I'm having done is interior to the building, including adding an extra bedroom and changing layout. After discussing plans with an architect and contractor, I would also like to expand the building on one side to add a new two car garage and a sunroom. This will enable the two existing garages to be used by my daughter and her fiance so they can park inside in the winter. Because the land is currently zoned agricultural A one. Expansion of the expansion of the actual size of the building is not allowed. Therefore, I am asking to have the property rezoned. To residential R two to allow the addition of the garage and sunroom. I believe that the changes I am making are planning to make are consistent with the current neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood and I believe my property is is the only one still zoned agricultural. I have no plans to add an additional living space or make any changes that would increase traffic or block views or any. Any other negative implications. I hope to be a good neighbor and believe that my improvements to the property will make it more attractive and improve the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we've heard from staff and the applicant. I'll now start questions from the planning commissioners. Start with Commissioner Disney.
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Simba.
Just one comment. You know, Serena, you mentioned that it was about the, you know, when you look at zone changes, look at the comprehensive plan. But this seems more about just overall compliance and just necessary for the owner to make changes to the property. So. Um, I'm not. No questions, but this is just a comment. It doesn't seem to be about the comprehensive plan in this particular case to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Into.
Um, yeah, just a couple clarifying questions for staff mostly. You know, again, as Commissioner Simba said, you know, I think it seems pretty straightforward. It's non-conforming. Um, all the uses around there kind of are of a different zone. But I was curious on the property, the northeast property at sit, you know, kind of near Sims. Is that R three? I couldn't tell because the color coding of the zoning is so subtle. You know, it's immediately east. It's kind of like the neighbor to this property.
I was pulling up my zoning map. Yes, right to the east of this property is R three.
Yeah, because it looks like single family residential, but it's hard to tell and and I didn't visit the site.
So yeah, I think, sorry, I don't. You can finish.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, um, it's part of. It's not single family. I think it's either a duplex or like a triplex for those two.
Okay. Okay, and then. Just again, clarifying. So it looks like kind of all the R zones except. Are three? Well, I wasn't really sure. Are duplexes allowed in? Any of the R one zones, you know, A, B, or C?
Duplexes are not allowed in R one zone districts.
Okay, so you have to be R two to have a duplex, even though looking at R one, A, B, B, or C. It says it supports medium density. It just still has to only be a single family home. It can't be a duplex, correct?
Correct. The, I think where it specifies the medium density, it's because the lot sizes are smaller for, let's say.
Coverage.
Mm hmm. And like you might have more coverage. So compared to R one, which is more larger lot sizes and less of a lot coverage. The R, for example, R one C is our smallest lot, single family zone district where the minimum lot size is about five thousand square feet. Compared that to R one, which minimum lot size is twelve thousand five hundred square feet. It makes for a denser neighborhood.
Right, that's why you have more lot coverage because you have less, okay, square feet. Um, all right, that that those were my questions. I just. Um, all right, that, that, those were my questions. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just one question, I guess, for for staff. And it has to do with the definition of legal nonconforming. Uh, and when, and I know we've seen similar things come up in the past. Does, i- is, is there a, a city policy about updating some of these obviously nonconforming properties? Uh, where you've got a duplex on, on A one agricultural zone, um, that it, it's certainly not a secret, uh, but does that issue of not legal nonconforming? Is that only addressed when, uh, we have an applicant who, uh, wants to bring a property into conformance or uh, can it happen just, uh, if, if, if there's an obvious something pops up on the map and, uh, without the property owner saying anything, the city decides that it, it ought to be, uh, resolved.
I'll go ahead and take that one. So that we have extensive, um, legally nonconforming situations in the city because so much of the city was constructed prior to our incorporation, so built before nineteen sixty nine. And our first zoning code followed in the early nineteen seventies. So a lot of what exists today is not always meet the current code and we've done, you know, hundreds of code amendments over the years. So we don't have a policy in terms of proactively making that right, but we do have a code section. It's in twenty six one twenty that it that explains sort of how we handle nonconforming situations. And essentially, in most cases, those situations are allowed to continue to exist, but can't be enlarged or altered or added to. So there's a policy by virtue of that code provision. Um, it doesn't usually become an issue for most folks because, um, especially maybe more often in commercial cases, there's not as much investment, but in this case, and and frequently, um, I would say more residential situations where, um, like here, an applicant, uh, wants to add something, then they do typically have to go through process and be proactive because it's often the solution sometimes is a zone change and and sometimes is something, um, lesser. So it's, it's case by case if the existing code provision can't, um, work for them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kearns. Any questions? I have no questions. Are there any other questions from any of the other commissioners for applicant or staff? Raise your hand. Okay, I will now open up the, I will now open the hearing for the public comment. If you wish to comment on this case, you will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Speakers may not donate their time. Is there, uh, when you, when I recognize you, please give us your name, spell your last name and share your address. We'll now mute all participants. Please keep background noise to minimum. If you do not plan to speak this time, you may mute yourself through your own device. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
Hi, it's Vivian.
Can I get your address, please, and last name?
Last name Voss, V as in Victor, O S as in Sam, six nine two zero, West Forty Seventh Place. And I know in, uh, city council meetings, we've been having issues with posting dates, times, et cetera. Thus you have, um, agenda item number two tonight. But I did want to make a comment that I drove by the property and two signs were side by side on one fence. And that, those two signs happened to be entirely blocked by trash cans that day that I went by. And so I don't know who's really in charge of putting those signs up in a proper place so that they can be seen by the public and or make sure nothing's in front of them so that they can be seen. So I'll just leave that as a comment for you all to figure out. We need to do better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Please speak now before I close the citizens forum. I'll now close the citizens forum. So there's this one question about, um, I guess anticipating where trash cans are going to be, um, why there's two signs on the fence. I don't know if there's supposed to be a sign on each side of the fence or just on the primary road.
The signs are in the correct location. I think this is the case in most neighborhoods. A trash can usually has to go in a specific location and is time limited, so it's not optimal. Um, but we've had the similar situation where on street parking can sometimes block a sign in a limited way. So there is a code provision. Reads the fact that a parcel was not continuously posted for the full fifteen days or potentially visible. Uh, at the discretion of the hearing authority, uh, does not necessarily, um, excuse me. I just lost my place. It's not constitute grounds for continuance where the applicant can show that a good faith effort was made to meet this posting requirement. Um, so it shouldn't, it does not make an impact on your ability to have a decision tonight, but certainly duly noted. We've had some uh, comments from the public over the last few weeks and months on how sign posting is effective.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant or staff? Raise your hand. At this point, I would now entertain a motion.
So moved.
We need to please, you need to read the entire, entire motion. It's on page eight of the PDF. Eight of twenty-three.
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ twenty dash zero four, a request for approval of a zone change from agricultural one A one to residential two R two for a property located at eleven seven hundred West Forty Sixth Avenue for the following reasons. One, the proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety or welfare of the community and does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Two, utility infrastructure adequately services the property. Three, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city, of the city's comprehensive plan. For the zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. Five, the criteria used to evaluate zone change supports the request. Six, our two zoning will bring the existing duplex into compliance with the zone district in which it is located.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I would just like to compliment the applicant tonight, uh, both for her efforts in improving that property and certainly in her patience. Uh, with the unfortunate, uh, rescheduling of this meeting, uh, and that, uh, wish you the best of luck on that project.
Is there any other comments for discussion? Call for a vote.
In favor?
Motion carry six to zero.
Thank you, everyone. I will now move on to the next case. Give me one second here. I'd like to open up case number zero A dash twenty dash zero four and ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Bush Code of Law is concerning notice requirements for continued and postponed public hearings. Uh, for the public hearing, we will be adding appropriate staff and what applicable the applicant's or video feed. Screens will be shared. A presentation is being made. They will remain a part of the video feed to the conclusion of respective agenda items. After the presentations, the commission will ask and questions of staff and applicant, and then we will conduct the public comment portion of the hearing. This will be conducted in the same manner as earlier by ammuing all public participants. We typically administer an oath for any participant in a public hearing, staff, applicants, and the public in this virtual meeting format. We're administering the oath in a different way. If you comment during a public hearing tonight by choosing to testify, you're agreeing that the testimony you give will be the truth as you know it. May please have the staff report.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and share my screen. I just have a couple of slides. Tonight, someone will give me a thumbs up that you can see this.
I can see that.
Okay, here we go. Thanks.
My name is Lauren Nicole and I'm a planner in the city's community development department. Purpose of this code amendment is to provide procedural clarity in the code. The zoning code and city charter provide clear expectations for the notice requirements associated with a public hearing. This includes notice by sign and letter as well as publication in the newspaper and on the city's website. In some cases, however, a public hearing may be continued or postponed. A postponed hearing is one that is scheduled and noticed but never opened and instead is rescheduled. A continued hearing means that the hearing is open but is either not conducted or not completed in the same night. As described in the staff report, postponed and continued hearings can happen for a variety of reasons and both have occurred recently. In the last couple of months, we have discovered that the code is not clear regarding the notice requirements for these unique circumstances. And further that there is a conflict in the code. In the case of a legal protest against a zone change, a hearing is automatically continued to the next council meeting, usually two weeks later, making it impossible to meet fifteen day noticing requirements. For these reasons, the proposed ordinance clarifies that notice is required for continued and postponed hearings. But the notice is not required to meet the time requirements of the original hearing date. In local government, it is common that a hearing continued or postponed to a specific date subject to the same notice requirements as the original hearing. In Wheat Ridge, we place a high value on public notice and have customarily completed notice in these instances and will continue to do so in good faith and with the guidance of this new procedural clarity. Planning Commission is compelled to review all code amendments to chapter twenty-six and to forward its recommendation to City Council. A public hearing at City Council is scheduled for July twenty seventh.
And the only thing I want to add, um, is in response to a question that I got today of essentially sort of what does this look like in real life? Um, we've seen over the last few, uh, months, we've had cases that were continued or postponed either to the next business meeting, which is two weeks later, or sometimes further out than that. So when it's continued or postponed to something beyond two weeks, it's not an issue. We'll, we'll usually be able to meet, always be able to meet that fifteen day, um, noticing requirement. But it's when it's when it's continued to the next business meeting, so two weeks later. What that means is that next morning, often a Tuesday or Friday, depending if it's council or planning commission, we're scrambling to rewrite signs and redo mailings, um, update the website and submit a, uh, notification to the transcript. So while our normal notice is fifteen days, um, under a continued or postponed sort of worst case scenario, so to speak, it would end up being twelve, thirteen, fourteen days. So certainly, um, ample notice and as much as we can accommodate in that timeframe. Um, but the, the silence in the code is certainly creating an issue that we need to clarify. So everyone has the same expectation of what that looks like.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Disney, any questions?
No, no questions.
Commissioner Simba.
Uh, one minor question and then comment. So on page twenty-two of the document under section three, which starts section twenty-six dash one one twelve dot C dot seven dot B in the code of laws regarding procedure for zone change protest is amended to read and it starts with E. I'm wondering if that should be B.
Probably, I can pull up the code to check that, but yeah, that, that's.
Because I don't believe there's an E.
No, I think you're right. I think the heading is correct, C seven B, so that should be B. Yeah, thanks for getting that. We can update that before it goes to council.
But the comment is, it's more for all the commissioners. I'm wondering if we could think about putting some sort of minimum requirement. The fifteen days currently is is the minimum requirement, at least fifteen days. And so when we say that it should not meet the time requirements of the above, it's, it's, to me, it's kind of open ended. And so I'm wondering if there should be a lower end, even in this case, maybe twenty-four hours or something, um, that's a little more concrete than it. I know what you said, Lauren, and you're trying to be, uh, good faith. Um, but I'm wondering if it should be something specific about if it doesn't meet this minimum requirement, then we go to something else. So that's my comment and I'll wait to further discussion on that.
Commissioner Intol.
No questions at this time or comments.
Commissioner Larson.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I would, uh, I would echo what, uh, Commissioner Simba had said. I'm still not clear. The, uh, uh, hearing is proposed, there's a notice requirement. Um, it's noticed for fifteen days, the hearing is rescheduled. What, what, what are the requirements after that? I, I guess that I'm still not clear on, on what the city is required to do in, in that two weeks. Uh, I can think of all kinds of things, but none of them would probably work.
Are you asking me what the requirement is right now or what it would be based on this code amendment?
When the code changes, what will the requirement be?
The requirement would be that we do a sign notice, letter notice, newspaper notice and website notice, but that it not be, um, it wouldn't have to be the fifteen days. So it doesn't have, and I wonder if it doesn't have a language like in good faith. Um, I mean, this is a public hearing, so we have to declare as our staff presentation sort of, does it pass a straight face test? And if any deciding body didn't feel like it did, then certainly it could continue again. And often sort of adequate notice, I think, is a consideration of, of staff and the commission and of council when they're selecting a date to which they would continue it. So, um, I don't, I don't think it's the silence on that minimum for a continued or postponed, I don't think is intended to be a sort of sneaky, let's do it as short as we can. Um, I think we all know that we need to declare in a continued or postponed hearing date sort of what that looked like. Um, and our applicants have, you know, we keep all of that documentation in the case file. Um, so certainly the intent is to provide ample notice because the purpose is to provide public notice at a public hearing. Um, but certainly, uh, recommendation by the planning commission to add some number of minimum would be appropriate to afford to counsel if you are uncomfortable with the absence of any minimum.
Well, it, it would just seem to me that the, uh, the real sticking point is trying to get a legal notice published in the Wheat Ridge transcript. The, the rest of it, you know, posting something on, on the website, uh, putting a sign up in front of a property is something that could probably conform with, you know, uh, say eleven days or twelve days or whatever. It's just getting that legal notice in the paper, right?
Correct. Yeah, that's the biggest one that we don't have as much control over, um, because they have pretty strict publication deadlines um, in terms of when they need to receive something. So that's, that's the hardest one to me, but the others, uh, are certainly more in our control.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kearns.
No questions.
So on that same subject, uh, yeah, I agree that there should be a minimum, and I think it, it needs to be a little bit staff driven. As far as the, the paper, um, I'm not sure that that needs to be the, the deciding factor, you know, what if, what if somebody doesn't man the ship over at, at the Wheat Ridge transcript, you know, life still goes on. The Wheat Ridge, uh, the city doesn't have control over that. They have control over the website and the signs. But the, I think that, I think overall the transcript's a nice idea, but, you know, where, where are people? Has there been any kind of, I guess, uh, a poll on just a random sample of people that, you know, you ask them of these, of these three things, where are you getting your information? And you know, I'd like to see what percentage of people are actually going to the Wheat Ridge transcript to make sure that they know what meanings are being held for city council and planning commission versus just going to the, the city's website. But, um, that's, that's my comments, but I think there should be minimum. I'm just not, I'm just not sure that about the, the Wheat Ridge transcript. It seems, it's, it is kind of redundant. It's a, an electronic version. It seems it's it is kind of redundant. It's an electronic version, right? They're not printing. They're not, are they printing the paper, a physical paper? I don't know that. Does it go out every week? Does it go once a month?
It it does. They do print it. They also post it online. I understand that. Newspapers around the country are sort of struggling through COVID, so I don't know if their distribution schedule may change in the future. The reason we still use the newspaper is actually because it's required in the charter. So we would still use it, but depending on sort of your further discussion and public comment, a minimum. Number of days for the other components, sign, letter, and web may be appropriate. And then we can control those, and I have slightly less control over the newspaper. Which is likely less, less eyes on it than some of our other tools. That's why we have multiple sources of notice, right? To try to triangulate them through different audiences.
Um, because I'm struggling right now to think of when I even received a Wheat Ridge transcript. And it's, it seems to be a long time ago that I even got one. So, yes, Commissioner Disney.
Um, in the case of the transcript, if it is published electronically. Would that suffice to serve as notice or does it have to appear in the printed version? Because if it's printed electronically and it's published every day or once a week. It would seem that that issue would be covered. But I know how the city operates, and if people can find a way to make a stink about. One small technicality and throwing a wrench in the works, they'll do it. So I'm just trying to figure out if our bases are covered. If that paper is published electronically.
The charter language is a newspaper of general circulation, so I think it is assuming it's a printed version. But that's certainly something I could ask our city attorney before this goes to a council hearing. It's a good thought.
As the attorney.
Yes, I can. Yeah.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay. I will now open the hearing for public comment. If you wish to comment on this case, you will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Speakers may not donate their time. I recognize you. Please give us your name, spell your last name, and share your address. We will now unmute all participants. Please keep background noise to minimum. If you do not plan to speak at this time, you may mute yourself through your own device. Is there anyone out there that wishes to speak?
Hi, it's Vivian again. Still need my name and address, Tammy? I didn't hear you. Six-nine-two-zero, West Forty-seventh Place. And all of this is coming about because there have been stinks that have made. In regards to the process working. As it's supposed to, I'm getting some feedback. Are you hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I think this is great that city council and planning has taken it upon themselves. To somehow rectify what has turned out to be a problem. And it seems like the easiest controlled, probably most viewed. Would be the city webpage. And so I'm thinking if that could be the fourteen days. Then I think that is covered well. If it's a continued or postponed. Then you already have your signs at the applicants. So those should just be staying up. So that would be an issue. And then the transcript is going to be what it is, either digital or printed. But I think everything should have some kind of a staff-driven, well-processed date. That can be met. I don't think this should be open-ended possibilities. Then no one has any way to address what might be done or not done properly. And that would be my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
I have. Maravich with her hand raised.
Yeah, sorry, Anna Maravich, thirty-six fifty-one Ward Road. So along with other, with everyone's comments on section twenty-six dash one oh nine E. On subsections one and four. Is not required to meet time requirements is a real concern. I I have a concern that the verbiage not required to meet time requirements is too ambiguous. The statement does not establish any concrete timelines or performance standards for notice across all forums. I mean, does this mean that these notices would be posted five minutes, ten days, one day, thirty seconds before the hearings to begin? This wording implies that citizens should just trust that the city and the applicant will make a good faith effort to give notice. So instead of expanding the scope and timelines for notice to ensure that all citizens can be properly noticed for hearing. This wording, in fact, contracts the time for notice to zero. And then also in section twenty-six dash one-one-two dot C dot seven dot B. The change for legal pro, legal protest. Once a public hearing is open, no more letters of protest can be accepted, but a protest can be rescinded at any time before the vote. So by opening the public hearing, the possibility of any more legal protest being submitted is eliminated. This now comes into conflict with citizens' rights and gives more weight or skews it to the developer or applicant. Instead of the process being transparent and expanded to provide more opportunities for citizens to exercise their rights. They are now severely contracted. This should be changed to a postponed hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Figlous has his hand raised as well.
Okay.
Yes, hi, Ahor Figlous, F-I-G-L-U-S, nine-seven-seven-five, West Thirty-sixth Avenue. I agree with the comment that was voiced, I forget which commissioner voiced it, or a couple commissioners voiced it about. And that Vivian made and Zorian about the the fact that there there do need to be some time constraints in there. I understand the the reason why, you know, something like this has come up. Just to make it more expeditious for for it to flow, something that maybe wasn't considered previously. But I I I very strongly recommend that, you know, I mean, it could be ten days. If you have ten days and you've got, let's say, a city council meeting is on Monday. And it needs to be published in the transcript on Thursday, ten days gives adequate notice on that. I think that the most important one is the signage that's placed on the property because that informs the neighbors. But it's also, I think, the the publication in the transcript. I mean, I think that that is something that people can go to, you know, to to verify that. Or whatever. Some people do read the transcript, but I think the question of, you know, how many people actually get their information from there is immaterial. I think that there's, you know, whether it's one person or, you know, or ten or however, it doesn't matter. So I I encourage you to to put in some kind of definition in there as far as time is concerned. And I also agree that the last comment about the. The fact that legal letters of legal protest cannot be accepted after that. If they can be rescinded, then they can be accepted. I mean, it should be equally applicable to, you know, both both ways. I don't think you should be able to, you should cut one out and. You know, leave the other, leave leave the option door open for exiting, but the door is locked for entering. I think that's that's not correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak? Please speak now before I close the citizens forum. Okay, I will now close the citizens forum. And then can. Can we, can staff answer, I guess, a couple of these questions? There's. The comments were in favor of the transcript. Need a minimum time limit. And favor, strong favor of supporting time constraints. And then the, probably the one question was. About the legal protest. Is that something that we're changing in tonight's case?
I'll address that one first. So the the purpose of the ordinance is sort of to clarify procedure. And I believe the phrase that Ms. Maravich is referencing is that shall be opened with no testimony taken. There are other provisions in this code section not included that indicate when a legal protest can be submitted. And it has to be submitted before the hearing is open. So that. The code amendment made here shall be opened with no testimony taken does have an impact on when a legal protest can be taken. The reason that this is suggested is twofold. It's the procedure that we've functionally been using. So memorializes a practice that we've been doing. And further, it balances the due process rights of the applicant against the legal protest rights of citizens. So there is an ample opportunity to submit a legal protest essentially anytime after the planning commission hearing and before the city can hearing. And that's, that's why it's been worded the way that it is. In terms of the transcript, again, because it's not something that's in our control. I think it would be more than appropriate to memorialize a minimum. You know, the requirement that we publish in a newspaper as we have in the proposed code amendment, but maybe have a minimum. Apply specifically to sign, letter, and web where we know we can attain that.
So for the the transcript, the, we don't know what the, what their minimum requirements. If the planning mission meets on a Thursday, when would they need to? Or a city council meeting on a Monday, when is their published dates?
Off deadlines, I mean, you've heard deadlines. I've also heard rumors that they'll be consolidating some of the transcripts for the metro, for the Jeffco area into single publications. So those deadlines may change. It's not something that our staff does. It's something that the city clerk's office is responsible for. And not not planning staff. So I'd be less comfortable. With some of those variables setting a deadline and just requiring that we do publish in the paper. And setting the deadlines for those other three outlets.
Commissioner Disney.
Do we ever, as a planning commission, if we pass something or approve it. Is the turnaround time to city council the following Monday? Does it ever happen that quickly?
Occasionally. In that instance, we've already published the public hearing and then we verbally forward your recommendation. It doesn't happen often. We don't like there to be overlap. It happens sometimes when planning this and the case gets continued. And the city council date was already set. So it fluctuates. It's not frequent, but it does occur.
So in that situation, if you have a minimum of. Fourteen days, it would have to be continued. You couldn't do it.
Right, I would, if you were to, so there's a couple of options here. You've you've heard the public comment and it mirrors yours. And I think it makes a lot of sense. So you can either, I can forward sort of this discussion to council for their consideration. Or you can make a formal amendment as a part of your motion that recommends there be a certain number of days. And if you were to do that, my recommendation would be, you know, seven to ten. I'd be, fourteen would be, could be a challenge. But I think ten is very reasonable for the letter, the sign, and the web. Usually do it, I would say, and maybe twelve. But again, I'd leave that up to you.
But the transcript, you think that might be minimum seven days?
Uh, no, so the tran, again, the transcript is tricky. They have a soft deadline on a Friday and a hard deadline at like five AM on a Tuesday. So when we've had to do it in the past, we've been working, you know, I've been on calls with our city attorney at midnight trying to get a publication done. It's just, they don't like it when we are last minute. So we also sometimes have to publish in the Denver Post. If we can't make a transcript headline, I have no idea what their deadlines are off the top of my head. And and as I said, I think some of those deadlines may be shifting as their business operations are changing in sort of this post-COVID world.
So it sounds like ten days might be a little more reasonable for the transcript.
I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't include a number of days for the transcript. I think that would be hard to meet in some situations. But I think ten days is is very doable for the signed letter and website. And the event requirement that we publish in the transcript. All public meetings are required to be published twenty-four to forty-eight hours in advance, depending on the content of the meeting. So if I I would say that we'd comfortably, the intent and the goal of of public notice. If we put in a deadline for sign, letter, and web, but not specific number of days for the newspaper.
Okay, if we.
Charter, but there's not a day number of days.
So if we, even if we, at this point, if we make a condition, this still go, the book would go to city council for discussion.
Precisely, yeah. So one option would be to. Recommended motion, you don't need to necessarily word smithy ordinance. But it could be with the follow, you know, I move, recommend approval, blah, blah, blah. With the following amendment that a number of days or you can pass by the numbers be added as it relates to sign and publication. And then that recommendation, this is chapter twenty-six, you're reviewing those. That recommendation would go to city council and they could either take it or change it or or modify that. But I do think it's.
Okay.
Important discussion to capture for them.
Okay. Is there any other discussion for the commissioners?
And Mr. Chairman, just that that one issue. The 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 language on it that that's states in section one. However, such notice is not required to meet the time requirements. I think that, just something about the language there is sort of a red flag. And that if. That if it is a, if we need to recommend that we put some days in there, I think that makes sense. And it would show that that the planning commission understands the concerns. And we want to try to get past, get over this hump. But that just saying meeting the time requirements or does not have to. I think it just, it's just leaves, leaves the door wide open for misinterpretation.
I would suggest that. It seems like there's a consensus from the commissioners that they want a time limit, some type of minimum time limit. And if the commissioners could come, I think if there is a time limit proposed, a minimum requirement. And it's going to be a discussion that will go forward with staff and and city council. So. Is there, is there any, at this point, where I would entertain a motion if we wanted to? Go forward. Unless there's more discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll attempt a a motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending chapter twenty-six. Of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning notice requirements for continued and postponed public hearings. With the recommendation that city council adopt a minimum notice threshold with this ordinance amendment.
Second.
A second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, can we just make a note, I think, in this discussion, I don't know if it's a actual amendment. But to remove that statement that says no minimum time requirement as part of this.
So it's a friendly amendment?
Well, from a dress. If that, if that, if that recommendation was to proceed, then that is the exact phrase that would be modified. So I think.
Okay.
Okay. That's okay.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, the goal here is procedural clarity. I think it's good that we add that clarity.
I would, I would definitely like to see some type of minimum requirement, but I I really would suggest that staff. That we don't pigeonhole staff and staff needs to make a determination is what is the minimum requirement? So that, you know, that we're not putting the burden on too much on them of trying to get. So that, you know, that we're not putting the burden on too much on them of trying to get a fast turnaround. And so I think there needs to be a little, little more discussion. Um, I, I think that would be, uh, considerate. Is there any other discussion?
One other point, Mr. Chairman, and, and this, uh, would, would be kind of stepping back and looking at the, uh, the city's legal notice requirements. This issue of, of publishing legal notices in a newspaper of general circulation, whatever the, the language is, uh, given where newspapers are headed. Is there some way that, you know, they want to consider, uh, adjusting that to take advantage of the fact that we have things like Wheat Ridge speech? We have the city's website. Uh, there is the physical signage. There are other ways to, uh, uh, notice the public and that would satisfy, uh, certain legal requirements, uh, without having to rely on a newspaper.
Yeah. It's required as a charter.
You can, but technically the, the citizens would have to vote to remove that from the charter. Correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
You, you couldn't redefine what, uh, general circulation publication is?
Certainly, if, of all newspapers, the general circulation used to exist on the paper form, we'd probably seek a legal interpretation on, in terms of what we would do next. But most often, the only way to, well, as it stands now, the only way to edit the text of the charter is to vote of the people.
Thank you.
And here the discussion? Call for vote?
In favor?
In favor, yep.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you, everyone. Is there any old business?
No old business. For new business, I do want to introduce to you our senior neighborhood planner, Jeff Hurt. He is, some of you have maybe spoken to him. I did mention maybe a couple of meetings ago that we wanted to give you guys just a quick update on the implementation of the neighborhood revitalization strategy. And one of the prominent recommendations there was a, we called it a listening tour at the time. And we've re- sort of reframed that to be an engagement, neighborhood engagement, resident engagement program. And Jeff was hired to create that from scratch and he's been with us for a few months. He actually, um, started his planning career here in Wheat Ridge, um, maybe fifteen years ago. And, uh, has worked both in the public sector and the private sector. He, uh, made a presentation to city council now a couple of weeks ago, right, Jeff? Um, and we just wanted to keep you guys in the loop as well and sort of have as many opportunities as possible to get, um, the word out there and sort of what's coming. We don't have all the details yet. We really spent a couple of minutes sharing where we are. So Jeff just appeared on your screen. Jeff, meet planning commission, planning commission, meet Jeff.
Jeff. Hi, nice to meet you all. Um, I did have a couple of slides on. I'm not sure if I need to be enabled to share or.
They're working. Should be all panelists can. I got, we've got a backup now. We've had a few snafus.
Yeah.
Working. I can share.
Like, yeah, I think, um, is that working?
Yes.
Cool, okay. Get it blown up here. Well, nice to meet everyone. Thanks for the introduction, Lauren. So again, my name is Jeff Hurt and, um, relatively new senior planner with the city, um, charged with implementing, um, one of the priority recommendations from the IRS. And I think most of you are familiar with the IRS. Um, so I'm going to keep it to about five minutes here just to give Kevin overview of, what we've been working on, what the next steps are. And, um, certainly welcome any questions and look forward to your feedback on this. Um, so the, the, this program we're working on, which, uh, it's a, we're probably sort of branded as a resident engagement program, um, but stems from the recommendation from the IRS. And the IRS was interesting, uh, city council adopted document from last year. Uh, really had a, a very short list deliberately of priority recommendations as opposed to a laundry list like you see in a lot of planning efforts. Uh, one of which was to advance a, a neighborhood engagement effort or program, um, with some details for what that looks like, but really, um, pretty sort of open-ended. Um, and so the last several months, um, we've been working on sort of designing what this program might look like. Um, designed to, um, per the IRS, uh, aimed at building resident capacity to manage change at the neighborhood level. These changes coming to Wheat Ridge. Um, so I'll share this, um, this map here that's based off of the, um, a map in the IRS. The IRS recommended that we sort of break the city down into, um, per that document nine, geographies for engagement, use their neighborhood, which I think can be confusing. We're kind of working on the semantics of that, but smaller geographies that are more manageable to kind of do a deeper dive, uh, into neighborhood issues and opportunities. Um, and so we've, we've, uh, proposed tweaking some of the boundaries here. Um, but the biggest change we proposed is breaking East Beach Ridge actually into two, uh, two sub areas. So it'd be a total of ten areas. We realized East Beach Ridge had about forty percent of the city's population. So, um, it seemed like a good idea to break that up and have to come back to this and kind of talk about the origins in this map. It was a very, the IRS was a very community-driven process in terms of having community members on a steering committee, a twenty-six member steering committee. Um, one of the exercises that was part of that process was a map your neighborhood exercise. So this was based on feedback from like eighty or ninety people from the community. Um, kind of, um, break the city up into, um, or manageable geographies for engagement. In terms of the framework, and again, we presented this in detail, uh, at council, it was June fifteenth. And I'm happy to share the packet, um, that has a lot of the details. But essentially at a very high level, the program we've come up with, um, would be, um, sort of doing, uh, engagement with neighborhoods cyclically over the course of two years and in rounds. So sort of neighborhood blitzes in rounds where we'd have, uh, two neighborhoods per sort of round or per blitz. Um, over the course of two years, we've covered the city. And so this proposal has us kind of in the ramp up period right now. Um, so we've got sort of this framework. Um, and once we identify what the first two neighborhoods are, um, we'll develop neighborhood-specific strategies for sort of how to engage, what the issues are, the questions, the stakeholders, things like that. Um, those sort of like rinse and repeat, um, is the proposal with the program where we have ramp up and blitz cycles. Um, with, um, after the first year kind of stop and assess where we're going, make adjustments. Since this is a totally new program, we've kind of created out of thin air, frankly. Um, we want to have a, a checkpoint to make sure, uh, that we, uh, you know, adjustments we need to make. So this is kind of the first year proposed for the program. Uh, and that's really all I had in terms of level of detail this year. It's very high level and happy to dive into any of the details. Um, but we do have, uh, program email that as we do more correspondence with folks, uh, this would be sort of the email portal at least. Uh, we're calling it Let's Talk. And so it would be Let's Talk Applewood, Let's Talk East Beach Ridge, Let's Talk Bel Air, whatever the neighborhood is, is sort of the brand. Um, so we would, um, use this kind of template for a lot of the correspondence. And with COVID, it obviously complicates things and kind of happy to talk about how we're adjusting, uh, with, with that world we're living in now. But we're, um, excited to move forward with it. Like I said, there is, um, a lot more detail on the council packet on June fifteenth. Um, we do also have, um, I know some of you have heard of the What's Up Wheat Ridge, uh, online engagement platform we're using as well. Um, so I'll have a page up and running, uh, for this program. But for now, we've got an activity on, um, sort of COVID landscape page called Wheat Ridge in this together. Um, the activity being folks can go in and pin a comment to a map, upload a photo if they would like. Um, we're keeping that open for the next probably a couple of months at least. It's open now. You can go to the link on this page, um, to pin your comment. Our hope is it'll give us some good, um, information on, you know, which neighborhoods are, are most active or most wanting to engage with the city and what the issues are. So that, um, that concludes my presentation. Again, I'm happy to field the questions and, um, look forward to your feedback.
One of the reasons, just real quick, that we wanted to share this with you all. Um, when I answer maybe preemptively, what we see is your role maybe being as planning commissioners. The success of the NRS update was really on word of mouth. And, uh, we were citizens, sort of letting their neighbors and friends and colleagues know that we had activities or, um, or events occurring. So as we start to roll into those cycles of engagement, those blitz cycles that Jeff was describing, um, we'll be relying on a lot of our city volunteers on the planning commission and other boards and commissions to help us, um, get the word out. So you'll get emails from us, um, as we're advertising things to the public when we're in your neighborhood. Um, I'll probably be doing little PSAs here on planning commission meetings and new business because these are recorded and on channel eight and we use every opportunity and platform we can. And ultimately, depending on sort of the feedback that we get, you know, the implementation could look like a wide variety of, of programs or, um, different communication tools or code amendments. And so you all may ultimately be seeing some of those implementation items. What, as they affect maybe chapter twenty-six or result in, you know, other sort of planning efforts.
Yeah, not for staff to just keep talking, but it's definitely, like, one of the things we heard is we're not just talking to people for two years. You know, we need to take action on things as we can early rather than wait for every neighborhood to be, you know, conversed with. So that's definitely on our minds and a lot of those things that could be chapter twenty-six things. Sorry, that's it.
Shantel.
Yeah, I just, um, I, I have to chuckle at the building resident capacity for change. Um, maybe because I do consulting and we come up with a lot of consulting terminology. Um, but really my question is, um, what specifically some of this I'm remembering from when we saw the NRS presentation? But is it kind of just the gamut from kind of like code compliance type issues, building community character? Or is it, could it include things like sub-area planning? I mean, just remind me a little kind of some of the types of engagement you'll be encouraging from people?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, so, yeah, it's really going to run the gamut, like you said. And I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, the interest recommended we break the city into neighborhoods because each neighborhood has its own unique issues. And so our approach overall tracks with what the IRS kind of foundation tells us, which is to actually not have preconceived ideas of what the issues are in each neighborhood. So we're going to go into these conversations with an open mind with having done our due diligence in terms of, you know, engagement strategies and things like that and having a sense of what the issues are. So, you know, in Anderson Park, folks might be want to talk about floodplain issues. And in Paramount Park, folks might want to talk about twenty-sixth and Kipling and the Gold's Grocery. Um, so we know that each neighborhood is going to have its own, its own issues they want to talk about. But from our perspective, we're keeping a, 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 a super open mind on this. We expect, um, that there'll be, um, code amendments, um, that will come out of this. But, um, it could also be other strategies that we don't even know about, frankly. Um, new policies, new ways of thinking about things, safety issues, frankly, infrastructure issues. Um, I think that, you know, that makes it kind of intimidating and kind of overwhelming. But I think it's, it's also kind of exciting to go into these, these areas and, 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 um, frame some questions in a way that are constructive, not to go into neighborhoods and be like, oh, tell us what's on your mind. But to give it some structure, but not too far along to where, you know, we, we think that we have the issues identified already. So the answer to your question is you're right, it could run the gamut and I think it was very deliberately done that way.
Well, it sounds great. I look forward to it. Thanks.
Jeff, are the neighborhood blitzes like door to door? Or how could you tell, tell us a little bit about what the blitz is? Is it meeting, meetings or door to door?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a fun word to throw around blitz, isn't it? Um, so, um, so it, it could be any number of things. So, and I'll first say that, um, one of the challenges we've had, obviously with COVID. But, um, as part of COVID, we envisioned having two staff kind of, um, implement this program. So, um, myself, and then we had an engagement specialist budgeted and actually a finalist selected and had gone through that hiring process. So the idea was we had this, um, we had two people, one of which, uh, the engagement specialist would be more of the hands-on sort of like, maybe door to door kind of thing, like leaflet, you know, um, canvas neighborhoods. And so we're adjusting to not having that person for now. And I envision, I still do, do envision, um, however, we can support it with staff, like doing that more depending on the neighborhood. And one of the things we're doing is like trying to talk to people that know that neighborhood well and get a sense of how will people want to engage with order. Or be effective, um, would putting your insights up be effective? What are the conduits? Are there community organizations or churches or whatever that we should go to? Um, so I think that along with an answer to your question is it could be that, yeah, like that type of thing. Um, but each neighborhood is going to get its own sort of like mini communications or engagement strategy to figure out what the best approaches. Um, and so it could be social media heavy, it could be in-person heavy, um, you know, that really is going to depend.
Sounds great.
Thanks for your questions. It certainly will not be the last time you hear about this program. As we're about to sort of ramp up, we've got article in the connections coming up. Um, and please do go to whatsupwetridge.com. Um, we've got a lot of different projects up there and, and the map activity that Jeff was talking about. Thanks for joining us, Jeff. Appreciate it. Um, the only other new business I had is that we do not plan on having our first August meeting. And we'll make a decision on the second August meeting here in the next week or so.
Okay. Is there any other discussion from the commissioners? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn since I'm getting darker and darker.
Second. Call for vote.
Motion pass, six to zero.
Thanks, everyone. Stay healthy.
Thank you.
Have a good night.